Okay, I move to accept the Financial Planning, Financial Administration, and Asset Protection Operational Expectations Monitoring Report. Do I have a second? Ms. Reed? Now, let's begin, and we're going to turn it over to our CFO, Kristin Michael.
Thank you so much for having me today. I appreciate the opportunity to present Financial Services Operational Expectations. The data presented in this report is FY14, and the excellent results in this report couldn't have been possible without the Directors in Financial Services. So here with us today are Shaquille Youssef, who's the Director of our Office of the Comptroller, Roger Ball, who's our Procurement Director, and then we're expecting Melissa Russell, our Payroll Director, should be down shortly. So, in the interest of time, what I'm going to do today is I'm going to focus from the executive summary and go through the executive summary, and what I'd like to do is just highlight items where we had a change from the prior year. Right then, if you want to look back at the end and ask questions on any of the other items, I think that's fine. To show you where we're at, for each item, I'm going to tell you what OE we're on and what measure, so you can follow it on the summary, and so people listening can also follow it. So, the first thing I want to look at is OE number five, Measure number 1.3, it's the third one down, the percentage of accuracy in actual and projected expenditures. So, this measure assesses the accuracy in developing the operating fund expenditure budget, and a high percentage indicates accuracy and alignment between the budget and expenditures. So, when we look at our results for FY14, our actual expenditures after we account for our budgeted beginning balance, funding the flexibility reserve and accounting for other commitments, was 37 million less than budgeted. So, that totals 98.6 percent of our third quarter estimate. That's actually a decrease of 18.7 million from the prior year, when expenditures totaled 97.7 percent of the third quarter estimate. So, moving down the chart, the next item I would like to focus on is item number six, Measure 1.7, percentage of contracts awarded through a publicly advertised competitive process. And that measure we're reflecting is yellow in this case. The outcome for FY14 is 64 percent. So, when we look at that, 64 percent, or 76 new contracts, were awarded through a publicly advertised competitive process in FY14, and then 36 percent, or 44 contracts, were awarded via exceptions to this competitive procurement or best practicable source. So, how does that happen? Well, in Virginia, the Public Procurement Act excludes school textbooks from competition, so some of these purchases were textbooks excluded from competition. But many of the other purchases in this category are curriculum items that need to meet rigid requirements to meet whatever the specific needs of that instructional component are. So, examples of contracts that typically aren't competed include things like instructional tools, so that can be books, software, test prep, things like practices for GED tests, for example. It also sometimes includes professional development and training for that specific software tool that was developed, and also consultants who have a specialized skill or capability in an instructional area, so, for example, school turnaround. When we look at the next item, it's number six, is the Related OE, Measure 1.8, generate revenue through the utilization of cooperative purchasing, rebates, and other procurement programs. In FY14, we received $1.6 million from these sources. That's an increase of 0.2 million. So, when we look at where we generated that revenue from for FCPS, through our cooperative participation in the U.S. Communities Contract for Office Supplies with Independent Stationers, we saved 0.4 million. We received a rebate of 0.8 million from the contract for our procurement or credit cards through JP Morgan Chase. And then, lastly, we received revenue of 0.3 million through public auctions of surplus assets, and also from cooperative purchasing programs. So, we really do look to gain the most efficiency from our procurement activities, and are really conscious of how much revenue we can generate when we participate in these programs. So, next, I'd like to move into the Efficiency Section at the top of Page 2, and it's OE 6, and the measure is 2.2. This is the percentage of electronic vendor payments to total payments. When you look at the results here, it shows that we're still at 64 percent, which is the same level as last year, which is rated as green. But in this case, when you look at this measure, while the percentage didn't increase, the Office of the Comptroller, in Focus, was able to bundle payments that go to one vendor. So, when we look at if a vendor was previously receiving multiple payments through ACH, we were able to bundle those into one payment, which is a great efficiency. But when you look at that in terms of this data, what it does is it hides all of the other people that we've been able to convert to ACH payments, because those bundled payments show up as fewer payments. So, that's a place where our numbers don't actually show, but we've been really gaining efficiency there. Next, I'd like to look at OE number six, Measure 2.4, the percentage of employees enrolled in electronic pay statements. So, all of our employees receive electronic direct deposit. This is electronic pay statements, where they get their wage statement mailed to them electronically. We've made great progress. We went from 94 to 97 percent, but it's coded as yellow, because our goal was to achieve a 5 percent increase. Now that we're nearing 100 percent, a 5 percent increase isn't even possible. So, this is a place where our goal probably should be adjusted. But we've made great strides here. The only group of employees who's not receiving their electronic pay statements is custodians. We have been converting all of our new custodians, and as we now implement our central management of custodians, we're really confident that we'll be able to complete the training that they need in order to opt in. So, that's something we believe we'll be able to complete this year. Moving to the Customer Satisfaction Section, OE number six, Measure 3.1, is customer satisfaction, it's a percentage of school-based staff satisfied with financial and budget communication and the information we provide to them in terms of training, so they can effectively perform their job function. We coded this measure as yellow as well. Our outcome for FY14 was 77 percent. We coded it as yellow, because we're still below our goal of 85 percent, but this is actually the third year in a row of an increase in that achievement. So, that 77 percent is a combined reporting measure of the training that we support to school-based staff in procuring quality goods and services. So, each one of those is really trending in the right direction, and we've made some great achievement there. Moving in the same section to OE 6, Measure 3.3, the percentage of customers satisfied with their procurement process. Our achievement there this year was 90 percent and 93 percent, which was slightly below our results from last year. So, this is an example that I wanted to share in terms of, when we received these results, our procurement office followed up with the department that gave us the unsatisfactory result to see why was it unsatisfactory. And the feedback that we received is we had a misunderstanding on what the expectations were. So, through the survey process, we actually do use the data to reach back out to our departments and always try to improve our customer service. So, our results are slightly below last year, but still well above our goal, and it is data that we're using to improve. If we look at the last item in this section, it's OE 6, Measure 3.5, percentage of parents and non-parents agreeing with the statement that we manage our budget responsibly. This is a new measure that was added specifically for this year, and it assesses the community's perception as reported in FCPS's Trust and Confidence Survey. So, the most recent Trust and Confidence Survey is the 2012-2013 survey, and the percentage of parents agreeing, or strongly agreeing, with the statement that we manage our budget responsibly was 57 percent, and that was actually an increase of five percentage points from the prior Trust and Confidence Survey. For non-parents, it was 41 percent who agreed or strongly agreed, which was an increase of three percentage points from the prior year. I think the important thing to note in these measures is there really is a significant number, percentage of people, who say they don't have enough information to answer at all. So, if we look at non-parents, for example, 40 percent of them said they didn't have enough information to answer the question at all. So, moving on to Initiatives Completed, the first one, OE 5, Measure 1.1, Budget Documentation. This was really our goal, to enhance the transparency in the information that we present, and in FY14, with Dr. Garza's arrival, was the first year that we published the Citizens' Guide to the Budget. So, with the Superintendent's Office and our collaboration with the Department of Communication and Community Outreach and Information Technology, we were able to kick off this great document. The next item awarded a competitive grant to build a school at Fort Belvoir, the Grants Development Section in the Office of Budget Services. They were invited to apply for an Office of Economic Adjustment Department of Defense Grant, and we were awarded a grant valued at $25 million to build another school at Fort Belvoir, which was a great accomplishment. Moving on to the next page, the very first item on that page, our procurement office this year, for the very first time, was awarded the FY14 Achievement in Excellence in Procurement Award. This award shows that we have national accreditation that validates our high alignment with best practices in public procurement, and it shows the dedication to continuous improvement in procedures in our procurement office. So, this was a big award, the first time we applied, and the first time that we won. Next, in terms of our procurement officer, office, it's OE 6, Measure 1.7 and 1.8, it's Certification of Professional Staff in Procurement. So, 60 percent of our professional staff in the Office of Procurement Services have achieved certification either through the National Institute of Government Purchasing or the Virginia Institute of Procurement. This is a great example of furthering education and certification to improve our employee skills and the services that they provide to departments. The next item, Payroll Initiatives. VRS implemented the Hybrid Retirement Model this last January 1st, 2014, and as part of that, they were instituting a VRS Modernization Project that required our payroll office to work with HR and IT to modify our HR payroll system and our VRS reporting subsystem, and they were able to effectively achieve that this last year. Then, all of the other items in this section really have to do with using technology to improve the efficiency that our schools and departments are receiving in terms of services from financial services. So, tools like our Critical Needs and Accrual Request Tool, CARRY, that we call it, allowed schools and departments to submit critical needs and accrual requests online. They developed and implemented an online repository for consolidated year-end reports for school activity funds and other tool for schools. They implemented a procurement card accounting module for schools and departments, where they were able to review, classify, and reconcile their credit card transactions online. And then, lastly, they automated the confirmation process for monthly financial management reporting that both schools and departments do. All great examples of where they were able to use technology to improve the functioning of schools and departments. When we look at the next Section 5, Initiatives in Progress, the very first item, OE number six, is Focus. As you all know, the county and schools together participate in a financial and procurement system called Focus. When we look at Focus, schools implemented the Financial Procurement Module, and the county implemented Financial Procurement and HR. But the school system has not implemented the HR or budget module yet. I'll talk a little bit about school and county budget working together on that, but the result of still having our budgeting system in our old chart of accounts and our financial and procurement system in our new chart of accounts means that we're still doing double work in terms of maintaining two chart of accounts, which is a workload that we're working to resolve, but that is still an initiative in progress. Next, if we look at six, and it's 3.1 and 3.2, our School Activity Funds Accounting System. We're currently in the process of enhancing and updating our School Activity Funds Accounting System, which many of you may know is called Great Plains, and we'd like to update that system to a new chart of accounts, which should really help in terms of reporting and functionality for schools. Following that similar path, two more items down from there. Item six, Measure 3.1, Financial Data Warehouse. Financial Services has been working to implement a data warehouse that should be able to provide additional reporting functionality, which is way beyond what comes out of the box in terms of our SAP implementation of Focus. So, currently, we're completing end-user testing, and we plan to roll out this data warehouse in the fall. And the exciting piece related to this is we are expecting to be able to get dashboard capability following this implementation, something else that we'll talk about in a little bit farther along. So, when we get to the next page, it's the very last item in this section, OE 6, Measure 1.7, and it's Procurement Initiatives. Our procurement office at the school is working with the county's procurement office, and we're completing a spend analysis project that's going to entail collecting all of our different expenditures, classifying them, analyzing the data, really looking to see are there other places where we can gain greater efficiency in terms of our procurement opportunities. So, if we start to aggregate that data and look more, there are other places where we could engage in competitive procurement to hopefully save more money or gain efficiency. So, in terms of the issues and trends, the first issue and trend is the Joint Budget Development Committee. County Board members and school board members have been working together on the Joint Budget Development Committee and have come up with recommendations and action plans, which were drafted to improve the budget process, to identify opportunities for smart savings and smart services, to improve financial management, and then to establish shared vision priorities and goals. And these recommendations we'll share with you at the November 17 budget work session. In terms of the next item, Financial Accountability and Transparency, with the increasing demand for financial transparency and accountability, Financial Services will continue to evaluate alternative technology tools to enhance our current delivery of information. So, as included in the State School Efficiency Review, one of the pieces that we'll be working towards is implementing dashboards that will help both program managers and principals, as well as the school board and public in terms of analyzing our data. The next item, Electronic Payments for Student Fees, we call that e-commerce. We're looking at providing an electronic payment option solution for parents to pay student obligations, things like parking passes, curricular material fees, field trip fees, performances, and actually even buy saleable inventory, like PE uniforms, online. So, we hope that that'll be a technology solution that will really enhance parents and schools' processing of those transactions. At the top of the next page, Focus, the entire Focus system is going to go through a major upgrade from version 6.3 to 7.0, and that's something that both county and school staff will have to work on, but that will require a great deal of time in terms of financial resources from the school system. In addition, in conjunction with the county, both the county and school budget offices are working together to develop a budget solution that will help us move off of our legacy mainframe system for the budget. So, that's a process that's just starting. Farther down, in terms of support for school activities, finance activities in schools, Financial Services developed strategic training for schools that included the creation of two e-learning classes, and two additional Blackboard webinars, and some how-to videos based on help desk calls that we receive. Financial Services also hosted what was called a Procurement to Payment Conference for school financial staff, and also a Budget to Reporting Conference for department staff, to help facilitate their knowledge of information about everything from procurement to financial reporting, and to provide an opportunity where they could collaboratively learn with our colleagues across schools and departments. Next, as part of the FY15 budget, we reduced the percentage of pay that employees receive when they're out on short-term disability. So, it's called our Integrated Disability Management, and short-term disability is one of those components. So, for employees who are out on short-term disability, the benefit payment that they'll receive was reduced from 100 to 90 percent. But employees who have a leave balance available would still be able to use their leave balance to maintain 100 percent pay during that time period. So, that is requiring changes to our system, and will require additional effort this next year. Currently, we have about 200 employees, just over 200 employees, out on short-term disability. Looking at future things moving forward, we continue to explore other technology options for enhancing our users' experience. That includes things like making sure we're able to submit all of our tax changes online, and also implementing online time and attendance reporting as one of our future goals. So, in conclusion, if we look at budget implications for future initiatives, if we look at the budget reductions that FCPS has taken over the last several years, Financial Services is really challenged in terms of maintaining day-to-day operations, and it's really limiting our capacity in terms of working to initiate new initiatives. So, that is a challenge that we'll have to look at as we move forward, and we continue to try to improve. So, with that, I'm open to any questions.
All right, we'll begin with Ms. Strauss.
Okay, thank you very much. Very detailed, very encouraging presentation. Thank you, as always. First, it's always very good to see we get clean audits, and that we are also taking steps to do whatever was recommended in the State Efficiency Review, and so all of that is good, and I can see how we are moving in all the directions we would like to move in. Couple of questions. The continued work with Focus, and first of all, when you talk about, again, is the upgrade again will be very labor-intensive, which it was on the first go-round, and the fact that we are still having to manage two different systems, and Lawson for HR, and yada, yada, yada. So, can we actually go forward with the staff that we had, or we're going to need more staff to actually be able to cover all of our bases?
I think as we move forward and look at all of these different initiatives, one of the things that we're really going to have to look at is, in many cases, the same people have to do multiple tasks related to the same function. So, IT has provided us with great support in terms of our Lawson system, but it's the same people who support that who are often asked to do other pieces, and you'll see the same thing within the staff at Financial Services. So, I do think we'll have to really look hard at what staffing we need and figure out if we have the ability to shift any resources anywhere, or if we do need some additional staff to make it through. Getting these upgrades is really important. You know, it really allows us to have the best in terms of functionality and to maintain our system on a supported status. So, things like the county shared upgrade is something we have to do. Now, I will say the county has been a great partner in terms of working with the schools. So, we've been able to really work well together in terms of trying to come up with dates that work for both organizations, and really benefiting from each other's skills. So, I think doing it together helps, but I do think we'll have to be really mindful of the resource challenges, not just to Financial Services, but to the other support departments as well.
Right. So, what is the timeframe for being able to get out of Lawson for HR, or is that going to be a forever thing?
You know, I'm not sure that we'll ever leave Lawson for HR, and obviously, Phyllis can answer. One of the things is when we look at Lawson, it's using the old chart of accounts, because it ties to our budgeting system.
Right.
But one of our goals for both of those projects is to implement the new chart of accounts, both for Lawson and for the budget system. Right? So, as we move forward with looking at the budget system, we've been engaging with people from both HR and IT in terms of that project. Right? And I think we'll be able to convert both chart of accounts, so then we'll all be in one set.
Okay. So, whatever plan we've got, you're confident we will be able to move forward, even though Focus was never able to do the HR piece?
Correct.
Okay. And for the dashboard development, I've noted the, sort of, the overall cost of $500,000, and an ongoing $40,000 to support that. Is that in the projected next budget?
We do not have this funding in our current next budget. That estimate was provided by Gibson Consulting.
Okay.
So, one of the things that we've been working on is, as we implement the data warehouse, once we get that completed, we'll look to see what functionality we can get in terms of dashboards from there. Right? And then, we'll have to reassess any costs for developing it further.
Okay.
But we do really see the value in providing dashboards, both to the community and the board, as well as to program managers who are looking at their data on a regular basis.
Thank you. And then, last question is Gadsby, where we are now going to have to state the VRS?
Correct. So, as part of our new reporting requirements, we're going to have to include our VRS liability on our fund statements, as will the county. We're still waiting for the state to give us the exact portion of that liability that's FCPS's, but it will impact our FY15 fund statements. It doesn't change what we have to fund, it just changed our reporting requirements.
Okay. And can you define, again, how they arrive at the liability for VRS, just so that everybody understands how that's done?
Sure. So, what they're going to do is they're going to look at the liability across the state and say, what is a liability for the VRS system as a whole? And then, they're going to divide it based on each participating locality's or school division's piece.
So, is it a liability? Is it a one-year liability, or a five or a 15-year liability?
It will be an ongoing liability every single year.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, next up, we have Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. Reed and Mr. Velkoff.
Thank you. Thank you all for the report and presentation. I do have probably three questions. First of all, going back to the dashboard, cost of $500,000 that, from the Gibson report, that, you know, having heard your response to Mrs. Strauss's questions, that do you expect the ultimate cost to be less than $500,000 after you do what you need to do?
I think our hope is, after implementing the data warehouse, that we will be able to come up with a solution that costs less. We're really hopeful that some of the, certainly the data in the data warehouse will be able to be used, but that also some of that dashboarding capability will be able to be used.
Is it premature to ask you whether it will be significantly less than $500,000?
Yes, it's definitely premature for me to give you a financial estimate.
Okay, thank you. The next two questions are probably somewhat similar. First, Measure number 1.7, which has to do with, let me go back to 1.7, to be exact, percentage of contracts awarded through a publicly advertised competitive process. I do understand your explanation, but it is marked yellow. Do we need to be concerned about that? And if yes, given your explanation, why so? If not, why not?
Sure. I would say, at this point, it's something that we need to be mindful of, not concerned about. So, it's a piece where it gives us a great opportunity to reach back out to our instructional departments and just remind them as we go through this process, and get their support in terms of not always assuming that there's only one option. I would say if the trend continues, or if the number goes farther down, at that point, we should be concerned, but at this point, I really think it's just something to be mindful about.
Okay, thank you. The next one is a 3-point.
May I add to that real quickly?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's one, Kristin, I think you pointed out several of the measures that we may need to revisit, because that can skew and give people the wrong impression, because depending upon what year, and maybe like you pointed out earlier, if there's a significant number of textbooks that are excluded from this process.
Right.
Then, it gives people the impression, potentially, that we're actually going down. So, I think we may need, that's an example, Mr. Moon, of one, that we may need to come up with a different measure, so that's really much more indicative of, I think, what you all are wanting to accomplish.
And I'm inclined to agree with the Superintendent's assessment on that one. 3.5, I know this is baseline data, and I also understand why the percentage of outcome is lower than probably, you know, most of us are hoping for. There are a lot of people simply do not have enough information to make a judgment. But is there a, you know, data out there, you know, some other school districts or, you know, nationwide, where we can compare our data to, to see whether, you know, we measure up to a national standard, or something that, you know, we should aspire to? Because otherwise, that 5741, even, that's the baseline data, and we might have a different data in the future, either up or down, might not mean much to me, because I don't know what that means compared to other school districts where.
I haven't seen data like this when I've done any research, in terms of other jurisdictions, reporting this in budget documents or other places. Right? So, I don't think there is a good comparison when we look to other jurisdictions. I also think it's really hard. We've always included a budget survey in our budget documents at the very beginning to try to get feedback from the community in terms of improving those documents, and what we tend to get is not information about how to make the documents more understandable or more transparent. It's almost always unhappiness with the decision that was made in the document, and it's really hard to separate those out. So, that is a challenge we see when measuring this data.
Is it possible to really find out whether the people are dissatisfied with the decisions made versus?
I think that's one thing that you can't tell unless they actually state in their written comments, you know, something that indicates that.
Is that something?
But that's what we found.
Is that something we can ask?
I think, potentially, if we want to change how we survey people, right? This is a survey that FCPS does. This is actually data from prior to Dr. Garza even being here. It's data from the 2012-2013 school year, and this was added as part of these monitoring reports. I really appreciate the goal in terms of improving our documents and improving what people think in terms of the transparency, but I do think it's difficult to measure that.
Okay, thank you.
Are you finished?
All right, Mr. Moon, you're finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Ms. Reed, you're up.
Thank you.
Bye, Mr. Velkoff, and then Ms. Schultz.
Well, we are on the same wavelength, because I had written down the exact same things that Mr. Moon and Ms. Strauss just raised. So, the Trust and Confidence Survey, I wanted to follow up on that a little bit, because I believe it's kind of linked, potentially, to the issue of the dashboard. You've noted that it was data from 2012-13. When do we next do that survey? Does anybody know?
It's a biannual survey. I believe it's done every other year. Yes, that's correct. So, that means this year, we'll be conducting that survey again.
Okay. Because in your very thorough report here, you've identified a number of very significant activities that you've done that could potentially help improve that rating in terms of, you know, us being able to manage our budget in a way that people feel comfortable with. But I wonder whether there's anything else that we can do, and the dashboard, you've indicated you're kind of working on that, and maybe working with the IT folks with their budget. Maybe you can kind of get creative, or, you know, using some of their existing capacities. We have dashboard, for example, in facilities. Is that something that we could, you know, is it like the bones of something we could use?
Yes, since we've, since the survey was actually completed, FCPS, in conjunction with the county, did implement our entire transparency website, right? Right? And I know that's been probably a year and a half. But remember, we have a transparency landing page that provides people with links to various documents and sets of information, and actually has an application where they can look at reporting information both for, it'll be up to three fiscal years. Right now, we only have FY 14 data in there. And then it shows the current year up through the current month. So once a month closes, then we publish the data from the prior month. So remember, that application allows you to look at budget versus actuals. You can see what the budget is, what the actual expenditures are to date. And then it also allows you to search payments by vendor. So for example, we used the example before, if you want to see how much we spent with Apple, for example, you can look and see how much we've spent so far this fiscal year. You can also look at the prior fiscal year. So I think in the interim, that's a great tool, and that's definitely something that was developed since this last trust and confidence survey.
Excellent. And that really leads me to my last comment, really, and that is coordination with the Public Engagement Committee on budget-related issues, that we could be more intentional perhaps as we try to improve those scores. Yes, the confidence went up 5% for parents and 3% for non-parents. But as we, later we'll be talking about public engagement, I think that there could be other opportunities such as just communicating this transparency link that you just mentioned. I'm not sure that even all 12 of us know about it or know how to get to it. So that's something that clearly could help people understand, you know, the tools that we use to manage the budget. So I encourage us to try to think about just making sure that the information that we do have and the tools that we do have are communicated in such a way that people can find them and use them and understand the information. I think your report is excellent. It's clear that you're short-staffed, and we need to be mindful of that, I think, as we go forward here. As we all know, our budgets are very constrained. But kudos to you, and I would like to offer a commendation when we get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Mr. Velkoff?
So first of all, I've been admittedly a bit of a distracted driver here. So if I'm asking for information you just gave, I apologize. My question is about the dashboard, but I don't think we asked about the timing. So I know that we're waiting, I know it's contingent upon the database, the data warehouse. So when do we anticipate the data warehouse being finished? And if we did all of this, when would the, when would we be looking to fund the dashboard?
Sure. When we look at the data warehouse, where we're at right now is we're working on user acceptance testing. So we're doing our final testing, then we'll be rolling it out to the rest of the schools and departments this fall. Right? So once we roll it out, we're going to have to take a significant initiative in terms of making sure people are trained, they understand how to use it. And I expect that to be our focus for the rest of this fiscal year because we'll really want to make sure that people are comfortable with the information and able to use it. Then when we look to next year, I'm not quite sure of the timing yet in terms of the data warehouse. This is a great example of something that's a one-time cost, that we should really be thinking about using our year-end available balance to fund. So my hope is that as we get closer to the end of this fiscal year, that we'll have that recommendation. And if we're able to do that, then in the upcoming fiscal year, that we would make a recommendation to use one-time money for this initiative.
Is that it, Mr. Velkoff? Okay. Ms. Schultz, followed by Mr. McElveen.
So a couple of questions. How does the VRS payment actually get paid? Do we lump sum it? Do we pay it? I mean, like, how's our bill come in? We pay it biweekly, weekly, monthly?
So our payment, the way we pay VRS, was one of the most significant changes in terms of the VRS modernization project. They actually changed how they calculate service credit. So that's been a big change. Right? So every single month, right, they send us information, and we look at exactly what people worked for the month and what their service credit was, and then we make the payment based on that credible service. And then, of course, the VRS rate is set as a percentage of payroll.
You know, because I'm asking, I don't mean to be delving into the weeds here, but, you know, a little bit like if you make 13 mortgage payments a month, a year, you know, can you buy down the cost? I'm just trying to figure out if there's any different way for us to structure. Is there any way for us to save any money? Or it is what it is?
It is what it is. They actually tell us, and we have payments mandated each month by a certain date, so we don't have the ability to either prepay or pay late.
Yeah, throughout that idea. Okay. E-commerce, first of all, are there any fees contemplated with that, like we currently attribute, which I'm hoping we're going to get rid of with the lunch, with the lunch payments?
Yes. And thank you for bringing that up. One of the things that we've been really mindful of as we look at any type of e-commerce solution is not charging parents' user fees. Right? It doesn't incent them to participate. And really, by the use of collecting these payments electronically, we do think we're going to be able to reduce the workload of people at schools, which ultimately should lead to savings.
Right. Okay. So that's where I'm going with it because not only does it not incent, it disincents.
Yes.
It disincentivizes. And so I'm advocating not only, you know, sooner rather than later on a rollout than this, because I can tell you as a parent across, you know, multiple schools, multiple grades, multiple pyramids, multiple districts, multiple clusters, this is one of the things that drives a parent, like, to no end, crazy. But if we tack on a fee, you know, it's a no-go. So I would say earlier rather than later. You know, don't be like GE, we're going to bring all these good things to life, but they never come. So I want to see it at the earliest possible. Is there, I mean, I hate to segue on to the lunch thing, but do we have a goal to get rid of that?
We absolutely have a goal to get rid of that user fee for lunch. Absolutely. Right? And we really are looking for synergy to make this easy for parents. We want one place that parents can pay their fees, even not multiple vendor sites. So it's absolutely something we're working towards.
And then on the executive summary, on the last page, page eight, or page, I don't know, there's no page numbers on this, which is very difficult. That's a side note, I'd suggest that we get.
Good feedback.
Page numbers. So the last, the last bullet, where it says, in order to help the employees with the self-service options, they're going to, you're going to need to have additional equipment, computer equipment and ongoing replacement funding. Why do we need to fund equipment for employees to take advantage of self-service options?
Many of our employees, more concerned, may not have access at home in order to access those things. So if we look at bus drivers, custodians, food service workers, we really want to ensure that they have the access that they need in order to take advantage of that.
Could we not have at schools where they visit multiple times a day, you know, effectively workstations for them to access?
And that is, one of the things we're looking at is making sure. So in order, for example, for food services, when we rolled out the electronic pay statements for food service workers, one of the things that we worked on was making sure that they all had access, not only to a computer in that cafeteria, but a printer, so they could print their pay statement as well. So that is something we'll look at. We need to be mindful of the timing of when those people need to access the information and how they can get to it. But we'll certainly look at that. But as we implement these new computers in these places, we don't have an ongoing budget for computer replacement. Right? So it is something we need to be mindful of as we move forward.
I don't want to be counterintuitive, but to facilitate an e, an electronic payment, installing printers for them to print copies of statements?
If.
I mean, is that, is that not self-defeating?
Some employees really like to have a copy, and if you don't have a computer at home, right, many people, when they get to the end of the fiscal year or calendar year near tax time, they want to have that printed copy. So you're right. I think if you looked at our system as a whole, I would guess the majority of employees aren't printing their electronic pay statements. But for some people who don't have access at home, they may very well want to print a copy so they have it with them.
I just, I feel like that's something that we got to look at. I mean, buying and installing and maintaining and updating and repairing printers so that employees, and I don't know, is it one, two, 1,000? I don't know how many can take advantage of it. I mean, that just seems like a quagmire that we're sort of robbing Peter to pay Paul. On that same, on that same report, but back up under number six, the bullet, again, I really wish that these, like, on a numerical numbering system as opposed to bullets, we had something to reference. So the one, two, three, the fourth bullet up from the bottom, support for financial services. We talk here about e-learning videos, blackboard webinars, and online videos. Are those all things that we're producing in-house in order to facilitate this support? I mean, it looks like we're doing a bunch of online videos to teach people in the schools how to do, I'm like, again, is this a best practice? This looks like a lot of different layers of different methodologies to export knowledge down to the school.
So one of the things we found is if we implement something new or make a change, right, that if we can train our employees at their work site, at their convenience versus having them come here, that it's much easier. It gives a principal and their financial person the ability to do it together if they wish at a time that's convenient to them. So rather than having people come here, we've tried, as we've developed new things or implemented a change, to be able to give them that training that they can watch at their job site. We typically aren't making new videos. What we try to do is we do a lot of online pieces where we just record and narrate over using screenshots. So we're able to do that as part of the regular training classes that we have for people to come here. But we're really trying to be mindful of the impact we have on their work and the travel and their time.
And the reason I ask this is, you know, there's an intuitive thread here about online webinars and stuff. I mean, is there, are there any metrics for us to find out whether this works? This is effective? It's being accessed? I just, I'm just trying to make sure that at the staff level in the school, which is where all the pressure comes to bear, that we're not creating things that either they don't want, they don't need, aren't relevant, are hard to follow.
Yeah. When you're speaking, I mean, we have outliers, you know, and I think that PD is always something we can improve upon. I will tell you that just because of the size of our county, I think most of our employees do want flexible options. I will tell you, as we survey our employees, they also don't want to always have to go to a central place. They do like the opportunity to be at their schools with small groups of people. And I think too, now, the quality is something we always have to make sure that it's high quality and that it's pertinent. I do think online like this that you're mentioning or talking about, Kristin, is also an opportunity for people to go back as a repository to reteach and relearn if there's an area they want to, you know, it becomes a resource, I think, if we do it well. But it's something we always have to improve upon, make sure that it's timely, relevant, and high quality.
And my last one's the next up. If we could go back up to the satisfaction survey number, the 2012, 13 numbers, wherever they are, I think it's on the other. Mm-hmm. So, and I think this is something that I've heard as a common theme from many board members over many OEs or other types of reports, is having the raw percentages is one thing. I'd like to know the raw numbers. You know, I mean, 85% satisfaction or 92% satisfaction or 77% satisfaction means absolutely nothing to me if it's six people.
Yes.
I just, it's out of context, and I think having meaningful data means having meaningful data.
I agree. So you'll see on page 16 for the trust and confidence survey of the full report, I did include a data table that gives you the percentages as well as the respondent count.
And that's, oh, of the full report? So that includes, so in the, in the OE report, where you've got the screenshots, like the OPS customer service survey, you've got the background data to this? Because I didn't see it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were looking at where you said the 57 and 41, which is OE number six, measure 3.5. In that case, I did put in a data table. But if you would like data tables for the others?
Yeah. No, I mean, like, so like 3.1, you know, we showed the transition from fiscal 12, 13, 14 of percentage of satisfied versus very satisfied. And you have the progressive 62, 67, 68, 76, 84, 86. But it's of what? You know? So again, the percentage, you know, has to be, to be meaningful to us to understand, you know, is this a composite of the whole customer index? Or is this, you know, are these, you know, handfuls of people? I just think to give the board context, to understand the breadth of the analysis, we've got to have the numbers.
Sure.
That's it, Ms. Schultz? Great. Mr. McElveen, and then I have myself. But is anybody else want to be added to the list? Okay. Oh, and, all right, Ms. Strauss, thank you.
So obviously, a lot of our discussion has revolved around the online aspects of this, and I think that's due to the great work that you guys have done, particularly considering the fact that our financial information is so much more transparent than the county's. So you do need to be commended for that. I would like to build on what Ms. Schultz said about the fees. I won't repeat what she said, but we definitely need to work on that with FNS and other things. One of the things that popped out on this online trend as well is the P-card piece. Have we been doing those by paper? When you say that we're converting online, that seems pretty surprising.
So when we get our procurement card transactions, the real new piece is that people are able to reclassify their expenditure online. So what that means is when we issue a procurement card, for example, right, to a school or department, and it's tied to a specific, what we would call, fund center and commitment item, or who and what is buying the item. Right? And that's where most of the transactions occur. So let's say your P-card is tied to office supplies because you're in an office and you're purchasing something. A majority of your transactions are going to post there. But let's say you are purchasing an instructional supply. Right? Now you have the ability, prior to that transaction posting in the financial system, to actually change or reclassify that expenditure. So when it posts to the system, it posts in the correct place. Previously, the expenditure would have posted to office supplies, and you would have needed to submit a journal entry, which is also an online adjustment, to move that transaction. But we think this is really enhancing in terms of letting people make that transaction previously, before they did have the ability to view the transactions but not change where they were posting.
Okay. So that's not as big of a transition as I had thought, so that's good. And then I think this is going to dovetail with what we're going to discuss in the government, governance work session next, which is that new OE on online security. So I would be interested in how we are also working in that vein on these various things, whether it's e-commerce or these other pieces.
Are you finished? Okay, great. Ms. Smith, I'd like to ask some questions.
You know, I've just had a concern over all these years with the difficulties we've had changing to the new system with the county. I mean, is there an end in sight that we're going to be able to get to where we need with this?
I am hopeful that we have an end in sight. I think Lawson is working very well for our HR system. You know, I would defer to Phyllis and Mary Beth, but I do think that is functioning very well. When we look at the budget system, we have to have an end in sight. We're still using a legacy green screen mainframe system. But I am really confident, I think one of the things that we gain from working with the county is the ability to use our staffs collectively, which I think's really helped address the workload. But we will need to ensure that as we work with them, that the solution meets our needs. Right? So in the event that jointly together, we can't either purchase or develop something that meets both of our needs, then we will be back and I'll be having a different conversation in terms of, you know, making sure that FCPS's needs are met as well.
And just one other thing. On page 17 of the report, it talks about the budget toolkit for the school board. I thought it was the third year. Because we did it in calendar year 11, 12, and 13.
These are the actual binders that we gave board members. The one that you're going to get at the November 17 work session will be your third. Since this monitoring report was as of June 30, you don't have the new one yet. That's why this is referring to the second one that you got last fall. It's a strange timing.
Yeah, I guess I'm not, I'll talk to you later. Because the first one we had was in 2000. in 2011.
Yeah, I'll double check.
Okay.
But I know you're all getting a new toolkit at the budget.
So, I thought this was going to be the fourth one. But anyway, thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Dr. Pajardo.
Yes, good, good morning. There've been a couple of questions around the Lawson, Lawson, Lawson system, so I wanted to just make a few comments. I'll be talking about that next month at the HR operational expectations. So, yes, we are holding it together with Lawson, our Lawson system. We did not expect to use Lawson a few years ago. We actually had done a lot of planning to come in line with Focus. So, for HR, certainly some of the reviews that we had made and some of the efficiencies, we thought we would gain through aligning Focus and the SAP product, now that's requiring us to take a little bit more time than is expected. We also had to buy additional upgrades to the Lawson system as well. So, we are using it. It is what we have. We are working with IT, and we're trying to make the best of a situation, but it has caused some drags, because we could not do the things that we had sought out to do through the efficiency.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first one is that I, in, I guess, following along with Mr. Moon had raised with the, the costs, looking at with the data dashboard and the data warehouse, I just wanted to say that I'm excited about that option, and, you know, obviously, we look forward to when you have a better sense of the costs involved. But I think that really is going to be something that will help us as a school system and the public understanding, you know, a massive enterprise like FCPS and the costs involved. The second thing I wanted to mention is, Dr. Garza talked about when we look at the procurement, procurement data points, and how that can sometimes skew the data depending on, as you noted, those things that are exempt from sort of procurement processes. And I very much support getting those types of measures where we would break them apart, because I think it's very important when you look at, again, the transparency component, but when it's out of context, then we're being transparent, but then we might actually mislead the, the public into not realizing the great work that we are doing. So, I think there's great value, the sooner the better, to figure out how to do that measure, based on maybe that what it is, is you, you break it out based on those things that fall within procurement laws, and then those that are considered exceptions. The other thing is, with the trust and confidence survey, Mr. Moon had mentioned, you know, looking at other school districts, if they've ever surveyed their stakeholders. And one thought I had was, do we know if the board supervisors has ever surveyed Fairfax County residents in a similar fashion?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, kudos to us, then. I was just going to say that as we, we talk about how we want to engage our citizenry and get a sense of our performance, I certainly hope the board supervisors might learn from us and see the benefit. And I do think, actually, that there's where you would have a much better way of doing some side-by-side comparisons of the public's awareness and understanding of the budget process from the county's side versus our side. So, that was my little plug I wanted to make sure and note. And then, if there aren't any other school systems around the country, especially ones, obviously, they're similar in size to us, then I think that would be very interesting, and I would suggest is maybe a next step, that when and if Dr. Garza and staff have time to just find that out for us, is there anybody out there doing anything like this? Otherwise, I think it's nice to see Fairfax County trying to lead the way in improving public understanding of major government services, like our public school system. The other question I have is about, and I don't know if this falls within your area and/or this is where there's the overlap with Dr. Pajardo's off, or department, but the issue that's been raised with me from some teachers in the past is about how the school system reduce, makes reductions to an employee's paycheck if they have to go beyond their normal sick days, and that it's my understanding, and this is where I don't know if it's an IT issue, but that depending on the month that the teacher is going to be absent, their reduction in pay will vary. So, one month, it might be, I'm drawing a number out of that, $350 for that missed day, and then the next month, it could be $450 for the missed day, based on the fact that it's the number of total days you work in the month. And I, I guess, so my question is, who, who oversees that decision? Is this a technology issue? And if so, is that something that we're trying to fix? Because I do think that does affect our teachers.
It's, it's not a technology issue, but it is complex. So, we have information that we've presented to our employee associations that we could share with you. One of the things for teachers is, we pay them the same monthly pay every month, regardless of the number of workdays. So, I do think we're treating them fair and equitably, but it is kind of complex, so I'd be happy to provide that as a next step in writing, so you can see how we calculate on what happens with someone is on leave without pay in various months.
No, I was, I was going to actually defer this to payroll as well, and kind of say what Kristin has said already.
So, I would look forward to a next step response, but my quick answer, or my quick question and with a quick answer is, is it true or not true that they will be charged differently for those days?
Sure. It's true that if you are on leave without pay in different months, that your amount that you'll see your pay decrease by is different. And that's because the value of a working day is different in different months, based on the number of days that you work in that month. So, it, it is complex and something that I can certainly give back to in writing. It does vary, but I do think employees are treated equitably across the entire series of the years. Right? One of the things we did this year is change the policy in terms of sick leave. So, now, when all new employees start, they are immediately advanced three sick days at the beginning, and then once they get past that, they earn more days, right? Ultimately, our goal is to have people present and, and working, and we hope that new policy will help as well, in, in terms of making sure that we're paying people, we're not needing to have people out without pay.
But just to clarify, so when they get their paycheck each month, a teacher, it's going to be the same amount each month, right?
Absolutely. So, when we look at, like, we're headed into December, for example. In December this year, right, we have, our Christmas break is actually two weeks. Their December pay amount is the exact same as a month where maybe we had no school holidays at all, right? So, they do get a level pay amount every month.
And so, it would be my advocacy with Dr. Garza that we look at a way of making the, if they're being paid the same amount, because it is a 10-month contract that they're working, that just as we give them the same paycheck each month, we should not be charging them different amounts for a sick day. If, you can't control necessarily if you're going to have to take leave in October versus November versus December, and I, it does concern me that we are charging them differently depending on what day of the, which month, it turned out that they needed to take those extra days. I just, I, I'd like to figure out the solution to that, because I, it does, it is something people have raised, and I can understand why.
Well, we'll look at it. I think what you're suggesting is a standard defined daily rate of pay, and that gets a little bit more complicated, but let us, let us look at that, and we'll provide your written answer to it.
Great. I appreciate that. And then I just wanted to emphasize that I do support the comments my colleagues have made about being able to improve the e-commerce opportunities, especially for our families when it relates to student fees and costs. I think there's a real benefit to that, and, oh.
Pat Hines?
Oh, yes, okay. I do want to share with you something our colleague, Pat Hines, had submitted. She wasn't able to get here this morning, and will be joining us a little bit later today. But it is under 1.02, under financial services OE. She wanted to share that she supports the investment in developing the budget data dashboard, has shared questions with staff about the budget, and found sometimes she would hesitate because she didn't want to contribute to the enormous.
I'm sorry, I just, I have a point of, point of order. I'm concerned about a board member participating in a meeting materially through reading an email. I, I'm worried about Freedom of Information Act. It's open meetings law, and we're, we're, I just, you know, I've never seen this done before.
I think it's my understanding that you're allowed to, if you have an email, you're allowed to contribute via email, via, I, that.
I can name anybody I want.
Right.
Somebody else can ask the same question.
No, it's my understa, Ted, do you remember that? We, we talked about this, and the training that we went to, and the.
Well, I, I know there is an issue if it's happening in real time.
Right.
Okay?
That's a different issue.
But this email was received by the entire board before this meeting.
Correct, correct.
So, I'm not sure that the concern that we would have about something happening simultaneously pertains here.
Well, I guess.
But I'm not the lawyer.
Well, it, it would be my understanding that this was sent and shared with the board and the superintendent, so now it's already subject to FOIA. And we're in a work session where it's not, like I said to people, refer to her email, and, and the public doesn't get to hear it. I'm actually reading out loud.
Correct.
What, what she's saying. It's not a vote. She's just wanting to share, share some comments.
And you're reading them out loud.
Yep, for the public. And, and the board members to hear. So, we can always ask our school system general counsel, John Foster, but in the meantime, I, I'm not worried. Anyway, that was, the, the point being here is that I think, Ms. Michael, you're hearing, many of us show support and enthusiasm for the budget data dashboard, and as you look at the cost, cost involved, certainly, just continue to communicate with us, but I think what we're indicating here is the, the enthusiasm and support for it. And then I would just say that there was a, a question about integrated disability management, and why were those changes made?
We changed the payment for employees out on short-term disability as part of the FY15 budget. It was an actual savings by reducing the amount that employees get paid. It went from 100% of payment while you're out on short-term disability to 90%, but employees do have the ability to use leave if they have leave that's available. And if they use leave, they'll get paid the 100%.
Kristin, if I might add to that. Kristin, could you speak a little bit to our short-term disability benefits as compared to other comparably sized school systems, or any surrounding school systems?
Sure. So, when we were developing the FY15 budget, and we started to look at our benefits and how they compare, one of the things that we found is we were really probably out of alignment paying our employees 100% when they were out on short-term disability. Industry standard is much lower, much, much lower. So, we took the first step and reduced it to 90%, but as we go through our compensation study and look at next year, this is, again, something we're going to study as we move forward. But it really helped bring us towards alignment. The benefit is, is still above industry standards.
And I think that, that really is very helpful context in terms of the, and I would actually suggest that if that isn't in the body of the report, it's something maybe to amend and add in, because one of the things that will help our, our employees understand is why would you make this shift, and, and especially in a time that we're coming out of the recession, and being able to recognize that we, as a school system, it has to be competitive and has to look at what is the industry standard, that will help. I think our employees understand why a change like that was made, and I think that certainly will help several of us. I know I made a note during your presentation, so I'm, I'm pleased that Ms. Hines had sent in the question and asked about it. I don't have any other remaining questions, but I know that Ms. Strauss had a go back.
Yes. I would like to make a motion. I would like to move to commend financial services for receiving the awards from ASBO and GFOA, and for receiving the clean or unmodified audit opinions for all school board funds, as well as school activity funds.
Second?
You'd like to amend the motion?
I would like, yes. I'm moving to commend. In other words, that's an addition onto the report.
Right.
Right.
And Mr. Moon would like to second it. I, I will say, I'm a little puzzled, because I thought Ms. Reed was the first one who asked to do that, so it just concerns me that.
I didn't know you.
She had asked to make that commendation, so.
Great minds think alike.
Didn't know, sorry.
Okay, then I'd like to ask the board, all in favor of the commendation? And it's unanimous, so we'll be adding that on to the main motion. Are there any other questions before we move forward?
Now, I would just say thank you for that commendation. I will tell you, Kristin Michael and her entire team did a great job, and I don't know that I know another person that worked as hard as she does. Very hard worker, and really appreciate being in this new role. She's done an extraordinary job, and really appreciate and value the opportunity to work with you. So, thank you, Kristin, for all you do.
And I just actually wanted to add to that on a related, the Joint Budget Development Committee, for those of you who, I know many of you have been involved and are familiar with that, but the amount of effort that Kristin, and I know Susan and others have put into making sure that we were well-staffed, and we frankly had a, an outcome that we could at least be comfortable with, I think we're closing on that, and it was really directly as a result of the work. And I would say, Kristin in particular, the work with the county and, and getting the language and the details, so that they reflected things that we thought were important, I think that was an essential element in the process. So, I know this is not directly related to the conversation, but clearly will be, it will be part of next year's report, so we may as well include it with at least the, the note this year. And I know there's a, there's a piece in this report where she refers to the Joint Budget Development Committee work that they've been involved with. So, absolutely wonderful, and greatly appreciated.
Great. With that, then, wrapping up this portion of the work session, I move to accept the financial planning, financial administration, and asset protection operational expectations monitoring report. Do I have a second?
That's already done.
Okay.
We did that already.
As amended.
As amended.
All right.
We've already.
Then, so, so Ms. Reed, you're still on record. Did you have a question? Okay, then, a show of hands, all in favor? And it is unanimous with, who are we missing? Ms. Hines, absent? All right, now I turn it over to Mr. Stork, my meeting manager partner.
Actually, we're going to turn it over to the governance committee and to Ms. Evans, and we have about, if we can finish in the next 20 minutes, we will be right on time.
Okay, do we need a break?
You need a two-minute break.
Two-minute break?
Oh, come on.
They have to do, they have to.
Okay. That's right, for the, for the, I forgot, for the.
But just remember, Mr. Stork will start this in two minutes.